From a cyclocross bike event, she's proposing to bring a bike race to Watkins Park. So she's here to talk a little bit about that.
Hi, thanks for having me. I'm president of Team BBC, a bike racing organization out of Baltimore, and we are planning to host a cyclocross race at Watkins Park on October 27th.
I'm sorry, just...
Sure. We've already reserved the park for that date, and we're here to request an alcohol permit contingent upon approval from the Carroll County Board of License Commission. Cyclocross is a form of bike racing that occurs on grass, pavement, with featuring trails and obstacles. There's different classes throughout the day for men, women, and children, broken out by age and ability level. The team will go out the day before and mark off the course with tape and stakes, and after the race is finished, we break down and clean up everything. We won't cross any of the ball fields, and we'll work around any areas the park deemed off limits. It's a very spectator-friendly event. We typically have beer and food trucks, and around 500 attendees have attended in the past. You know, we encourage the community to come out and watch or participate. It's a very beginner-friendly and welcoming form of bike racing, and if anyone is just interested in trying out the course, they'd be welcome to come try it out the day before because it'll be set up. So that's a benefit. There's a large contingent of kids teams that compete, and it's really fun for all ages. So I'm just here to answer any questions you might have, and thank you for considering our request.
I have a question here. Are you the same group that came out a couple of years ago?
No.
Okay.
It is the same park. I believe that was the passenger bicycles that put on that race, and they just didn't want to continue, they're too small of an organization to continue the work, but our team is hoping to take over the same venue.
And you're saying, how many people are scheduled to be coming?
We've had up to 500 attendees in the past.
Are they racers then, other 500?
It's primarily racers. Spectators are welcome as well, but most attendees do tend to be the racers.
What'd they say the distance?
It's about like eight to 10 miles. The course itself will be between one and a half and two miles, and then you just do laps up to a set time, so 30 minutes to an hour depending on the race that you're entered in.
So is part of the race then on the roads, and you would need road closure?
No, no road closures of your part. It would all be on the park.
Have you done it in other areas?
Yes, we've done this every year for, I want to say up to 10 years. I've been involved in the team for four years. Previously, we were at Schooling Mill Park in Howard County, and last year we were at the Howard County Antique Farm, I think is what it was called.
The Farm Museum of 1999?
Yes, yep.
Are they drinking the beer after the race?
Typically.
Well, I think your runner question was concern the consumption of alcohol. I see it on the agenda, so we'll be looking on that later on tonight. Did she come before the parks and rec board?
We discussed it at the meeting. They requested that.
Was it a favorable recommendation?
Yes.
I know when the other, when the other bike race, the question was, "After the commencement?"
Yeah. Yeah, it's a cool event for the community to come out and see.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, and no presentations tonight? All right, then we'll move on to the approval of the council meeting minutes and close minutes related to July 2019. I assume everyone's had a chance to review, and is there a motion to accept those now? Jason made the motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
In seconds, all in favor, say aye. Aye. And Police Chief, time for your report.
Good evening. Chief Freeze with the Mounary Police Department with the monthly activities for Mounary Police. During the month, we had four meetings, one of which was an audit from the Maryland State Police NCIC section. Interesting that we had no problem with that audit, so we passed that with fine colors. We also had Carroll County Traffic Team Meeting, and one item of interest for Mounary, there will be a full traffic signal going in on Route 27 at North Main Street. That's up and coming, and I believe it is supposed to be in effect by the end of fall. So that's, of course, coming, so you see that change. As far as our community outreach, we did have the Mounary month here for carnival this month, and speaking with Bruce back there, he did say it was very successful. That's great to hear. We had, we only had one reportable incident there this year, basically some graffiti in the restroom. We have our second annual National Night Out coming up tomorrow night at the Carnival Grounds. CSO vets who's here this evening, and Police Services Administrator Heather Smith has worked very hard to organize this great event. We have free food, snowballs for everyone. Be there, everyone who attends the Kwan's Club will be preparing the hot dogs for the police department. We also have a food vendor there on site, additional food options. Many other agencies will be there with presentations and information, as well as games and activities for the kids. Special thanks to all the volunteers and everyone who helped with this together and organized and donated to this event. Also, another item, the Mounary Police Department had a very generous donation from the Fort County Lions Club of two Rad Power Battery-Assisted bikes that we'll utilize for our Bike Patrol Program, so officially kicking that off. Previously, we've kind of had a pilot program in town, and we will utilize a International Police Mountain Bike Association, train officers, again, to patrol specific events in town and so forth, and this is going to greatly enhance their capabilities, which is great. But again, I'd like to thank the Fort County Lions Club, who wanted to assist the police department, and we look forward to deploying this equipment in future events and so forth. As far as our crimes, this month, we had 11 Part I offenses and 13 Part II offenses. Couple of instances of interest, we had auto theft, I'm sorry, attempted, it was an attempted auto theft and theft of vehicle at the Park and Ride. We also had destruction of property that occurred in the Twin Ridge neighborhood, where we had various disruptions, complaints of solar lamp, glass windows, screens, forest tree lamps, some deer hollow drive were reported to be damaged or knocked down. MAPD has begun working modified shifts to increase patrols in the area, and residents are urged to call immediately if something is seen or they observe any type of suspicious activity, and anyone with information is asked to contact Mounary Police Department and attention to Officer Saroye, and this incident remains under investigation. As far as the monthly radio summaries, good to note that there's nothing to report for that. During the month of July, we handled 835 calls for service. In traffic enforcement, we had 123 traffic stops, 59 citations. We issued 103 warnings, issued 22 safety equipment repair orders, had one DUI arrest, and made five traffic arrests. In criminal enforcement, we had a total of 18 criminal arrests. We took 48 investigative reports, made nine on-view arrests, adult on-view arrests, four warrant arrests. We had two summon services and issued three criminal citations. Do we, Mounary Police Department, have any questions?
Chief, just two things really quick. On one of the pages where you list all the situations and the total number, all the way down there where it says overdose, it does say one. So I wasn't sure if that was a typo or not.
I think that must have been a typo, and yours, mine, mine has nothing to do with it.
Okay, sounds good.
Or you must be looking at, I believe, I'm mistaken, you're looking at?
Yes, sir.
That one?
Yes.
Okay, that's, that was, that is just basically someone probably correct, failed to correct an incident, the situation that was found. It was actually probably a, like a assist medical case, it wasn't whatever it was. So we go through and actually review all the cases, and that probably, most likely it was a typo and mistake.
Okay, all right, thank you. And then the other thing, I saw on social media that some people were receiving tickets in the Park and Ride for cars for sale. Is that the Mounary PD doing that, or is that state troopers or?
Well, that is something that, of course, is the Mounary Police Department enforcing it because that's our area responsibility. It's always been enforced. I spoke with some of the previous troopers that's been here. They used to, what they do is they would either write warnings, or they would call the people to have the signs removed. We have already done that. We've actually gone through an education portion several months ago where we started making phone calls and placing warnings on vehicles. Now we've gotten to the point where we are issuing citation for the violation for several reasons, one of which, that's, that's an area that is quite frequent, frequently has crime problems. I got four pages of incidents here since we started where we've had thefts from vehicles, auto thefts, drug violations, suspicious persons calls, and that's just one, and that's part of the reason is that's an area that's intended for commuters. It's posted by the State Highway Administration that there's not to be any, anybody in there selling vehicles or soliciting for anything, and we've actually had up to about 10, 15 cars in there at one time just for sale signs on them, and that becomes a problem for the commuters. And we've actually had, when we've been in there issuing citations, we've had people stop us and thank us for going there because it, for a commuter, that becomes a problem when you try to pull in there and you go have a place to park. So, but it also, also gives up your criminal opportunists an opportunity, gives them a reason to be in there when we're talking to them, and they're just using, we're coming here to look at the cars, you know? So we kind of remove that from the equation, and it's also had an impact on the crime in the lot that's been occurring, all the incidents, because we have, we've had the one this month, but it's been a while since we've had some up there, so it is having an impact on the crime in the area as well.
Thank you for your effort, Chief. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Our chief, actually, Councilman, Council President Larry, suggested discussion about doing even more of an outreach because for probably two decades, it's really been known as our used car lot. I get the key, or then I personally, I just seem to overreact, and you just can't, but that's okay, there's crime issues, you gotta do your job, but I know you are looking at, maybe just in that report, that you're gonna pop some up on social media, because you know you did warn, because people called in with the warnings, you could probably get to people that were selling cars that month and not the people that were three months ago.
Right, that's, that's something that doesn't happen all the time, it's not the same ones over and over again.
Exactly, so if we could post something on your social media page, that would be helpful, even yellow placards, signs, and you are, I know those state signs, and over the years, people, and just be helpful, because again, we, I think Larry, you bought a car there.
Oh, yeah. I'm kind of gonna miss that block.
Pat's had his truck there with the campaign.
Yeah. I forgot about that. Would you just reach out, do a reach out on social media, I think you deserve a lot of that, but some people just know it's happening, so reach that.
I would say that your social media presence has been really good, so I appreciate that. If you could do something on the parking right there, I think that would save us a bit of trouble.
Sure.
Anyone else have comments? I just want to, one comment, I want to say last month, good job, I have a comment for last month, you in the report, you said you received, can't remember the exact committee or something, the report you did for community policing, that you said that the one comment was that your program of community policing was, should be followed by other police force in the area, so I just wanted to give a good job.
Thank you.
Shout out to you.
I'll share that with the officers.
Please do, thank you.
I want to just say thank you for all your efforts recently in the Twin Ridge development, and as you know, where we had some banquets up there.
Correct.
There seems to be a, you know, pretty good group of folks that would like to have a video, would watch me, so I'll talk to you offline.
Yes, please do, please do, and that's where CSO vets back here, he's very helpful in that, that's part of his job. He's great helping them get that organized, where it's not a program that we, we're basically, it's a liaison for the public and the police department, so we help everybody set that up, and it's like the neighborhood's responsibility, so.
One of the things that I know that people have requested, and maybe, you know, you could take this as something to be ready for when we do that meeting, is that, you know, a lot of people now want to hit the Ring Doorbell, so that we will have more videos, if, hopefully this never happens again, but, you know.
Right, right, and we also, we also are working on a process where you can register them with the police department, so when we have an incident such as this, we know exactly who we can reach out to and talk to to try to find information, if we can get them to check the cameras and so forth, and get back to us and let us know, so that's one of the things we're working on.
Terrific. One of the things that they requested though, was that perhaps you could direct people as to which ones to find, because when they go online, there's, you know, all these different Ring Doorbells, and they have no idea which one they should be.
You should have thought of Chinese before you made that recommendation.
Anyways, but thank you.
Probably be better asking their kids.
Let me make sure everyone has access to the cameras.
Okay, anything else?
It's a gesture.
Okay, all right. We're looking at the Volunteer Fire Company report, and I see Bruce. You know Bentley had a birthday, so.
Yes.
We had a busy month, rescue calls, we had 102 in Carroll, 53 in Frederick, seven in Howard, and five in Montgomery, for a total of 167 calls. Fire was a little busy also. We had 28 in Carroll, 13 in Frederick, two in Howard, two in Montgomery, for a total of 45, which resulted in 130 calls for service in Carroll, 66 in Frederick, nine in Howard, seven in Montgomery, for 212 calls for service. And we would like to thank the town, and especially the town staff, for all their assistance as usual with the carnival, especially with the parade. We need that assistance in order to pull that off, and we appreciate that. And also want to thank the police department for their assistance, both with the parade and providing security for the carnival, and even the chief will claim he was undercover in the beer garden. But on the 18th of this month, we will have our monthly drive-through barbecue chicken at the firehouse. Thank you.
So I have one comment about the parade.
Yep.
There was confusion on Twin Ridge Road, right in front of the Carnival Grounds, with the, one of the lanes not being closed while the parade was coming, so I don't know what happened, so the direction that we were going was closed, but people said, or people sitting on the side of ice, it was actually a safety concern because kids were running in the road with cars coming while we were throwing candy.
Were we a traffic in the by, or was it?
Yeah, yeah, so that is definitely something to...
Yes, we actually had, one of our officers on the bike stood in there and started trying to block traffic.
Yeah.
And we did see that as a, as a problem. I think technically the parade's supposed to end.
Technically, the parade ends at 27, because some of the fire apparatus don't even go down there, they leave, or our apparatus don't come in the side entrance, so if you're sitting down there, you miss part of the parade.
Yeah, it was definitely a safety concern.
Yes, I think in the future, we need to block it off, probably each shopping center entrance and down at the bottom of, at the shopping center by Twin Arch, bottom of Twin Arch, to help. So we saw that this year, and we did try, unfortunately, at the time, we were in the parade, there was only so many of us that was there, and we used the bikes to kind of try to help out, but it just wasn't working as well. So we already got a plan in place to deal with that next year, we already discussed that, kind of had an after-action briefing, and took care of it, so we'll fix that next year.
Well, thank you. We're down to community concerned citizen comments. I did see our Councilman from Frederick, Steve McKay, is out there. Did you have anything you wanted to talk to us about?
Just a few things. Do you have one? I just want to start off, this is the first time I've been here since your election, so just want to congratulate new members to the council, re-elected member, and I want to congratulate you as the new council president.
Thank you.
I hope to make this a more regular appearance, at least every other month. I'm down from being triple booked on these days to now being only double booked, so I'm working on it. Three quick things, I may get a packed agenda. The Liverpool Frederick Master Plan is coming to a close as far as the councils work on it. There'll be many other, you know, small area plans and corridor plans that come forward afterwards, but as far as the overarching, what we call our comprehensive plan, we have a public hearing on August 20th at 7:00 PM, and that's really the last chance for the public who have had many opportunities to weigh in. I just want people to know that if you have any questions, concerns, comments about the master plan, that's your time, so please take advantage of it.
And where is it?
It's gonna be at Winchester Hall in the first floor hearing room. Again, that's August 20th at 7:00 PM. I expect we'll have an amendment or two following that. We've worked through a lot of amendments in the process, I think we have a few more coming for us, but we do have a deadline of early September, where either we pass it, or it goes forward as is without any of the things that have been done on the council. So please make yourself available at that option. Personally, I'm having a town hall on August 17th. This is gonna be at the Urbana Public Library in the lower meeting room, the teleroom. That's 11:30 to 1:30, so I'm gonna just talk about things that I'm working on in the council, but generally just make myself available for folks who have questions, and I'll answer to the best of my ability. And lastly, I thought I'd just say a few things about the news of the day. I took part in a press conference this morning where the county executive and the council president announced what the county, what the county's going to be doing on the 287G program. Two things, we're going to hold a public information session between the council and the sheriff. This is something that the sheriffs asked for for several months now, just as an opportunity to ask and answer questions in public about the program, so we're gonna schedule that probably in the early fall. Secondly, there's going to be an independent audit of the 287G program, and a lot of people are reacting to that as, you know, as a negative thing. And I gotta tell you, I support the 287G program, but I also think...
Can you tell us what that is? If you're an organist or anything.
Not that I certainly know what it is.
I think I know what it is.
What is it?
The 287G program is a federal program whereby agreements are made with local law enforcement officers, and Sheriff Jenkins and the Frederick County Sheriff's Office has been party to this program for quite a while now. And basically, if someone is brought in on criminal charges and detained, then an immigration check can occur on that individual, and if they're found to be here illegally, then they can be referred to ICE, Immigration and Customs Enforcement Office, which is a federal office. So that's what the 287G program is. And personally, my own view, if you're here illegally and you're committing crimes, then I have no problem with that.
So it's reverse of the century, as you said?
Yes, absolutely. Yes, sir. So, so again, there's press conferences in the news, there's a lot of hubbub about it. So again, I support the program, but I also think any taxpayer-funded program or office can and should be audited. We do it all the time across the entire county, not just county government, but FCP, the public schools, public libraries, the sheriff's office. It's really not that big a deal, but people are making it out to be a big deal because it's a very politicized issue right now. I think we'll find that everything's fine, and we'll get past it. You know, if people want to complain about it, they'll keep complaining about it, if people want to support it, we can keep supporting it, but at least we'll know what it does and doesn't cost us. So, that's all I have. Any questions?
Yeah, we appreciate it, and if you'd like to just come out and talk to us and people, so.
Well, thank you for that, Keith.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Now then, when the sheriff is being asked questions at the council, will that be made public or will we get notification?
It will be duly advertised, it will be a public meeting. We're not gonna have public comment. The public will be there, and I'm gonna put on my prediction hat, there's gonna be a lot of gabbling to quiet down the public, because we had a meeting a few weeks ago, and there are a lot of very vocal critics of the program here in the county. I'm sure many of you are aware of that, and so it will be an open public meeting, we're just not going to have public comment during the meeting, and it will be on FCG TV as well.
Thank you. Maybe for yourself?
Thank you.
Thanks. Is there Commissioner Boucher hiding somewhere back there, or? Not hiding, so, okay. All right, so citizen comments, if you would like to make a comment tonight, could you hold your hand up so I can see how many people we got out there? Doesn't look like we have a ton of people, so just come up to the podium, take a seat, identify yourself, and give an address for the record, and tell us why you're here, so.
Hi, my name's Joyce Moylan.
Hi. I only talked on the phone with Ted.
And my address is 1826 Reading Court in the Mounary, the Twin Arch Development, and I'm here tonight to talk about fire pits. So I also have comment on the ordinance that's proposed, so I don't know whether I should talk about that as well, or just now?
I wish we didn't see her like five minutes ago, so.
Yeah. You can speak about it now, it's for introduction tonight, so there's not gonna be a lot of discussion of it this evening.
So you don't discuss it as?
Next, next month we'll be discussing it, so I would say, since you're out there, go ahead and tell us what you want to tell us, and, and maybe we can take it to heart between now and next month.
Gotta get my glasses.
I run into that problem, too.
And as the council received Joyce's email that was forwarded today, if you'll get a chance to check out, it was posted here, and that it was forwarded, so we did forward some of Joyce's comments.
Hate to admit that I wear them. So let me just start by talking about the problem I've had with fire pits in my neighborhood for the last 10 years, and I don't know how many of you have been to my neighborhood. It's a townhouse development, it's the one back behind the Tractor Supply, if you've ever been back there. We're very densely built back there. If you look at our backyards, we're 20 feet wide by, from the, from the back of the house, it's basically 40 to 42 feet to the back of the property line. If you're on a corner house, it's maybe, could be 22 feet. So in the, in the back there, so you're gonna have, you know, your deck patio, a lot of people have sheds, playground equipment, the deck will have, a lot of them will have stairs coming down, so in that, you know, some people, few people have put fire pits, and some of them are built in, some of them, a lot of people have just bought the ones you can get, I guess, at Home Depot or wherever you get them. So for the past 10 years, I've had one neighbor, I'm in 1826, he's at 1902, and he has pretty much lit up his fire pit on every nice evening, and, you know, so what happens is the fire pit starts, and for hours and hours and hours after it, the smoke comes up, and, you know, I have to close my windows and go inside, so I don't get to stay outside for that, or whatever, whatever days he chooses to operate his fire pit. And I stay up late, 2:00 in the morning, I let my dog out, and it's like, there's been a forest fire out there. The smoke, the, you know, you go out, your eyes water, you choke, I mean, it's, honest to God, the black smoke is still out there, sometimes there's debris and stuff that lands on my deck and my, and my patio, and this is 2:00 in the morning, you can still see the smoke, still smell the smoke, and you can go out front, still in the neighborhood there, a neighbor of mine walks his dog up the street, you can still smell it, I mean, it's just, and this has gone on, like I said, for 10 years, every nice evening that there's been, a lot of them, sometimes he goes out, but, I mean, it's, the, the smoke, the, the eyes, you, the irritation to your eyes, I mean, it's an environmental problem, it's a health problem, but it's just the fact that, you know, we are so close to each other, trying to have him have a fire pit going where there are other neighbors that are trying to also enjoy their properties, it's, it's just impossible. I mean, we're too close together. Then we had, I have a neighbor next door who decided to buy one of those things, and at the, at the local store or whatever, and he lit his up, I'm sitting in my kitchen, next thing I see are flames coming up, he's got it on his ground, and flames are coming up, I'm in my kitchen, I'm, you know, nine feet above the, the ground, I can see his flames coming up, licking the, almost licking the bottom of his deck, and, you know, my deck and his deck are about... And, you know, my deck and his deck are about two feet apart. So, you know, my concern is his use of his portable fire pit going to impact, you know, a fire on his deck, which then lights my deck up or my fence. You know, his recreational use, does that mean that, you know, I have to worry about, you know, my house going up? I mean, they're made of vinyl. Vinyl goes up, you know, like instantaneously and, you know, so we're talking about, we're so close together, what do neighbors have to worry about so that somebody can sit around a fire? I'm not sure, I know Mount Airy used to be very rural, but now, I mean, you've allowed development to occur where we're on top of each other. And what one person does, the other person next door, or two doors down, or four doors down, it's, we're all just suffering from what each other does. So it's very important to be wise about what you're allowing and what you're prohibiting. So we have, I mean, you can look at what the ordinance has proposed, and I'd say that, I mean, there's not a lot of very specific things in here to, if you're going to have somebody come out and enforce. So we're talking about if a policeman or police come out or the fire department comes out, I mean, if you're looking to say, okay, so what's prohibited and what's not prohibited? It talks about a nuisance. Is that nuisance description in there, the nuisance that's prohibited? Is that the legal definition of nuisance? I mean, and is it going to be a judgment call? I mean, is there a specific distance that is required, that it has to be from a neighbor's property? Is struck, here we have a, we have the word structure in here. Does structure mean stairs coming down? Does it mean a fence? Does it mean a wooden garden that someone has built? So does the fire pit have to be away from a wooden garden? Does it have to be a trellis? Does it, is it, does the structure mean the floor of the deck? Does it mean the stairs to the deck? Does it mean, you know, the pit, the sheds that people have in their backyards? So I think that when you look at an ordinance, you're looking for something that someone can go out that, because it's not going to be Mr. Betts who, he comes, he works nine to five, they're not lighting their fire pits nine to five. They're lighting their fire pits in the evenings, on Saturdays, on the weekends, and, you know, Mr. Betts, he's, he works, like I said, nine to five, Monday through Friday, and this is not when these recreational fire pits are going to be lit. They're going to be lit on the weekends and holidays and, so if you're going to have a complaint about them, you're going to have police or a fire department coming out to them. And they're going to need something that they can think, sink their teeth in and say, yes, I can see it's a violation, not something that they have to interpret because where's the guidance for them to interpret it? You know, is it going to be in the legal dictionary they carry around? Because that's not happening, you know? It's got to be something that, you know, it's, that they can clearly say, we have a problem here, we have a violation here, something that keeps people safe. We should also be thinking about protecting the environment. I mean, you can look at EPA's website. I mean, I looked up what does Montgomery County do? What does, you know, Howard County do? And they give some specifics about what's good, you know, what they do with these fire pits and how much distance there is. And should there be a competent person? And here we talk about adult, not an age. And what about if that adult is drunk, if he's consumed alcohol? Does that count as, you know, does that qualify him to look after these fire pits or not? So, I mean, there are a lot of things that, you know, concern me, not just the fact that I want to sit out on my deck that I've spent a lot of money for. I mean, that person with the fire pit spent money on his backyard, but so did I, and I'd like to sit out at the same time, you know, that everybody else does. So these are the concerns. And like I said, I've given up 10 years of sitting inside with my window shut when I'd like to be sitting out, you know, on my deck and my patio. You know, but to me, fire pits are great if you have the space for them and you're not impacting another neighbor. Another neighbor shouldn't have to sit inside, you know, and they should be done safely. And here it also talks about the instructions. You know, who has instructions? I mean, I think my neighbor next door doesn't have any instructions for that one that the flames came up. I mean, I look up some instruction, you can see they want a fire resistant mat, you want a fire extinguisher nearby, you want a lot of things to operate those things to, you know, safely. But, you know, most people, and my, another new next door neighbor, a new neighbor moved in next door, and first thing she unloaded was her fire pit. They're, you know, just sitting out there in the backyard and she hasn't used hers yet. But still, you know, I think people just, they don't think about those kinds of things. I mean, out here, I think a lot of you have half acre lots and, you know, lots of space around to do these sorts of things, but when you stick us all together, when you're looking at, you know, we're all jammed in here, you know, a small mistake by somebody can impact a whole row of townhouses, a whole neighborhood, a whole, you know, and it would be a disaster. I mean, we really would have, it would be a, so many families would have to move out.
I think we hear what you're saying. What you're saying is when we look over this ordinance between now and next month, we need to take townhouses into consideration in your scenario.
Yeah.
More than happy to do that, and I think we've heard you. And that's very important. You know, I don't know how your HOA responds to fire pits, but-
Well, I've gone to them. And basically what they've done is said, you know, we're doing hands off, we're going to let you all, you know, in the ordinance, in the bylaws, basically, they have things for nuisances and, you know, you're not supposed to disturb other neighbors and things like that. But they won't do anything, you know, until, and truthfully, the fire pits should not have been built because in the architectural guidelines, it says you have to check state, local, county, city, you know, all those guidelines before you build. And that was on the architectural plans. And so they should have checked with the City of Mount Airy guidelines and seen the open burning. And you also have a nuisance statute, I mean, nuisance ordinance, you know, that should have been checked. So, and homeowners have the responsibility to check all those things before they build. So it shouldn't have been done. And I think the homeowner association realized they made an error and now they're stuck with, you know, between a rock and a hard place. So that's where they are. So anyway, so that's what I have to say. And, you know, those are my comments, I guess, about the-
Thank you. Thank you. And I'm sure all of us will take those into account as we review that ordinance.
Any questions?
Sorry, answered by someone.
All right, thanks for your time.
All right. Thank you. Is there anyone else for citizen comment?
I'm Judy Bounder and I live over 206 Heritage Farm Drive in Village Gate. I feel bad for you, the lady just spoke, because she is in a townhouse with the fire pits. So I see there's a lot when you live in a townhouse, you're close to each other. But when you revisit the ordinance for fire pits, Ace Harbor sells them, Walmart, you got your smores, at Walmart selling all the products to promote community togetherness to family. So when you start looking at what the ordinance are, we got to keep that family unity in mind. In our neighborhood during Halloween, fire pits come out, kids are trick or treating, it's bonding together. Now, I agree, burning, construction, paper, trash, leaves, you know, that's, we're all responsible adults. But to, I mean, I guess the Riverville was try to ban them. I don't know what the ordinance, I don't think you guys were in that intention of recreational fire pits. But down the road, they were nuisance, I mean, my neighbor's dog smell is a nuisance. I mean, we're going to start policing everybody, that's hard to do. And fire pits, like I said, Ace sells them, Walmart, our community, the Tractor Supply, you know, the wood, everything you go in a store is keeping our economy in Mount Airy. We bought the wood down by the pen shop room, they sell the wood there. But just trying to do things legally, and I think those guidelines need to probably be, like she said, revisited, but not to ban recreational fire pits. I know I've had numerous phone calls, I had a visit from Mr. Officer Betts. Our neighbor continues to call saying that we're burning construction. My husband's accountant, I'm a teacher, there's no construction at my house, I guarantee you. I don't like some renovations, but, you know, I know some people, it's considered a nuisance, but also they're not considering the people that have the fire pits and how we bring the family together. My grandchildren toast marshmallows, hot dogs, we gather in the neighborhood together, and it's just that bonding and family unit. And it is, I mean, it's a fire pit, it's only seasonal, you're not going to be during it when it's 100 degrees out. It's, so I just want, sometimes we need to, you know, look at it, but not be policing everybody. Because then Halloween, you're going to get at least 100 phone calls. Because they're going to pull out their fire pits and that's, you know, just there's the family thing that keeps people together. But I just wanted to get our sense in our community, we love fire pits, Village Gate. Okay?
We'll work toward a happy meeting.
I believe the ordinance is online. I'd like to review, sort of talk about what it does and what it doesn't have. The ordinance is available online. Gina, is the ordinance available online? Is anybody now?
Yes.
Yes.
So it's online. If you want to be asking a lot of questions, those questions are going to be on the line. All right.
Anyone else tonight? One once?
One twice.
We are moving on. All right, we're down to ordinances. First is the annexation resolution 42, Dorsetown, tonight for reintroduction and report on status. So, here's the status. Last month, I suggested that we would probably be ready to vote tonight. And unfortunately, we are not ready to vote tonight because the developer is still putting together some numbers and trying to, trying to come up with a game plan that satisfies our three components, the developer, the residents, and the town of Mount Airy. So still trying to find that happy medium, so we're going to ask for one more month on the Dorsetown annexation. And so I move that we reintroduce annexation resolution 42. And again, for the residents that are here from Dorsetown, I know that you guys need an ample amount of time to review that, so we need to make sure that we get to that point through the, I think the developers attorney is someone here in the room. So we need at least 10 days prior to the September meeting, please, which is September 9th, by the way. So I move that we reintroduce annexation 42. Is there a second? And seconds, any more discussion? All in favor of that? Carl, did you have something?
Nah, I'll give it another one. I know we're dragged out now by MFI, us, or by the developer, or what, but-
I know strides are being made, so I don't-
Sir, there is progress?
There is progress. I turned last month and this month, and with the attorney and the audience, I know that they are fully aware that we need to get this done or take it off the agenda. So one way or the other, we need to move this one way or the other. So, all in favor?
Aye.
No vote? All right. So it's reintroduced. 2019-5 budget amendment for east-west playground equipment. And that was introduced last month, so it is up for adoption this month. Would somebody like to move that?
Carl, second. Motion to move and adopt ordinance 2019-5 budget amendment for east-west park playground equipment.
20 seconds.
You got a second?
30 seconds and discussion.
So you guys, oh, sorry.
You go ahead.
Okay. I was just going to ask, have Parks done the bids or looked at the options for this just yet, or are you just looking at the money right now?
We're basically looking at the money within last year's budget. So this is mainly just to bring it over from last year, but not included in this year's budget. We were expecting, I believe, a grant last year, which we did not receive to do it. We took down the existing, hold on. We took down the existing playground equipment due to safety, so we're just bringing over, adding the budget line to this year's budget to be able to, okay, we're heading to place equipment.
And then my next question is, is this a substantial money for the playground that you guys are looking at?
I believe Gina, I believe the town secretary said that should be enough, the 300,000 should be more than adequate for it, or close to it?
About right.
Well, we haven't done any bids, but I believe since we've been told that it, this is a pretty-
Reasonable amount.
Reasonable amount of amount for the-
All right.
Yeah, that kind of answered my question about grants. Gina Ashley gave some information earlier. And so this is going to come out of the Parks Reserve and Investment Account, looks like. So, any other comments, questions? Okay, all in favors, aye?
Aye.
All right, passes you, men. Next is a budget amendment for the Main Street Sidewalk Project. And this is for option 2019-10. And I'll go ahead and move that one in. So is there a second on that?
I'll second.
All right, Jason, second. Any discussion?
My only discussion that I wanted was just to make sure that all the council members were up to date on where this money is being put forth. So I just had a little conversation with Barney, just to give a little background as far as where the project is and where we're moving. So I would like to turn it over to Barney for a second.
Okay. So the FY19 money, 200,000, we had for South Main Street. We had the same for North Main Street, going basically from the drain station up to Watersville Road. And we've done more than half of South Main Street, but we haven't finished everything. The contractor went, he had another project, he went away for a month, he's going to be coming back very soon to continue, and we want to be able to finish that up, still do North Main Street, make sure we have enough funds. So we're not asking for additional money than what we planned for, we just didn't spend it all last year. This is just to move that money back into the current here.
Okay, any other discussion?
Just have one question. Now, I know when we talked about this project before, you said that some people weren't on board with it on North Main Street. Is that going to be solved?
Okay. So even on South Main Street, we have a few people that aren't on board with it, and we're not forcing it on anybody if they don't want concrete improved in front of their house or, you know, because it does come into their property to go around pole or that sort of thing. Or moving their mailbox into one of the cluster boxes, we're not forcing them to do that. We're, you know, trying to get everybody on board, everybody, most people are in favor of it. And so we've worked out a lot of, you know, concerns that people have had, but there's still some people who don't want it. One person came and spoke, he lives beyond the fire company, we were thinking of going up to that existing sidewalk, that's like the eighth house past the fire company. There's a few people that are concerned there, so we're not even going in that direction. So we're going to stop at Watersville.
And the one with the sidewalk.
So Barney, I have a question. When will the mailboxes, the individual mailboxes on South Main Street be moved and the cluster boxes be remounted?
So I need to follow up with the post office. They did say it would be a few weeks after we got those installed. We turned the keys over to them, but they still had to do reroutes of their, you know, helping people. And so they said it would take a few weeks to kind of get that turned over. So I need to see what they are.
Okay. No more questions? Okay, all in favors, aye?
Aye.
You men? All right, and next is 2019-7 to amend part two of the Code of General Legislation, alcohol beverages, public intoxication, possession, and consumption, and this is for adoption tonight. So someone else want to move that in?
I'll move it in.
I'll second.
All right. Jason and Pam, discussion?
My only question would be- My only question would be to be, I don't know, the legality of it, is there any concerns that we need to be aware of allowing the mayor or the designated member to make these decisions that we need to be concerned about, rather than the council making the decisions for a alcoholic event?
Or repeat alcoholic event.
Right. Yep.
For any first time events, still coming back.
Okay.
Jason, this is to make my life easier.
Thanks everybody.
Yeah, I understand your question...
Just putting it in front of one person and saying, you guys have done it for a number of years, maybe there hasn't been a concern or a problem, and then maybe there is a concern or a problem the next time, is there anything from a legal perspective that we need to be concerned about, or are we just, this is safe and we're good?
You're good. No. Basically, there's no legal impediment doing what this recommends. Would point out that, as the mayor indicated, this set puts forth an administrative approval process where the town council has acted previously to approve annual events, basically. And there's also built into it notification by the mayor of a receipt of an application for such an event in advance of the next town council meeting, so that the town council wants to withdraw its consent under those ordinance and sort of take this back, you can do that. But, you know, there are many licensing, sort of licensing functions that are handled at the executive level, as opposed to the legislative level, you know, or put up every time.
Okay.
So it's business license, for instance, you know, so, anyway, all that's just said...
So just for example, like the cycle across, their first time asking for it, it would come here, and then next year, if it so be deemed, then the mayor or the designated member can make that decision?
Correct.
Sounds good.
Well, I've got a concern for this, delegating the legislative function to the executive or to the staff level, which I do not like. Second, I would rather give permission than withdraw permission, even if it's a repeat, repeat function. So, that's my major concern with it. It needs to come to the council first, even if it's a repeat, that's better than having to withdraw it, because that gives some certainty to whoever's holding the event, too. Because say, they get through the process, they get ready to do it, a repeat offense, not offense, the event, and all of a sudden, we just like say a month or so before the event, we decide for some reason to pull their permission, for some reason. Not us, a future council or something. So I would rather have it come to the council first, and then go to town staff, instead of town staff to council first, for repeat and all events.
So even though it designates that, like, we would still have to see it before the event actually happens? You would get a piece of paper or whatever saying, saying that before that council meeting?
Yeah, I would just like it to come before first, and then come to us first, more so than go to the town, to the town staff, approve and check, and then we need to make a decision, if we don't have a problem, it's good to go or we withdraw.
Okay.
So I would just rather give the permission first. And it's also delegating the authorities to the council, to town staff, which I'm kind of against.
Which is still a piece of paper, though. Like, we're not getting a presentation on the alcoholic beverages, it's just a piece of paper that says that they want alcohol at their event.
Yeah, that is my personal preference.
I think Carl, you have a good point, I'll ask Tom to address that. I think you did just alluded to that it is an executive function in the area, so... Yeah, well, you know, I'm getting involved in, it's a good idea, but it's just from a legal perspective. This is currently only a legislative function by virtue of an ordinance. It says it is, you can change the ordinance and make it, or an executive function, if you want.
I mean, as I read through it, a question for me is, who's that, who's the designee gonna be? Is it gonna be the town administrator, or is...
It's always the mayor, I'm sure.
Okay, all right.
It's more than likely staff that are ready to set the process. It's got the same process now, it's just that we won't sit up here, people won't have to come into a formal meeting, they won't have to wait 30 days, there's some times where people have been held up, so you can get 30 days ahead of time, it takes all that red tape out for the repeat one.
So, I will say that in applying for a one-day alcohol permit at Carroll County, it's pretty involved, you have to submit a map of your festival area where you allow alcohol, as well as submit a detailed sort of prevention plan, how you're gonna rope off the area, how you're gonna contain the alcohol within the festival limits. So as long as the event itself complies with Carroll County, I have no problem with a town staff member approving the event, or approving, you know, the accession. Because basically, all we're doing is town council is saying yes, in addition to Carroll County saying yes.
And you have a 30-day limit, you want to go every 30 days, and that's why, that's why you actually have an executive function as postal legislative, because it streamlines the process. You have to get the five together, you have that form, you have to vote, you have to go, so with these kind of things, it just streamlines the process.
But it doesn't take, it doesn't take away the 30 days, though, does it? Because we still need to see it at the council meeting.
For the town.
Okay. So even though...
Oh, for repeats, yeah.
For even repeats, we need to see it at the, at the council member, at the meeting, so that if we need, if the council felt like we needed to rescind the vote, then we still had that opportunity. It doesn't negate the 30 days that allows them to have the event, where then we get the paperwork, oh, they had alcohol at so-and-so event, and then we go, no, we didn't want that to happen, and then it's already too late. It still needs to come before the council on a piece of paper, so that we are at least notified.
That's correct, that's, that's correct, that's, so it still has the 30 days. But if it isn't, it's shut.
Yeah, and that's the question at that point, what are we really providing with this ordinance? Are we giving them a group like NANSA, a warm and fuzzy, that they're gonna be able to get through for chili cook-off, Oktoberfest?
They're still coming back to the council, for me, that's how I feel about it, because I mean, it's a purpose, you get that 30 days, my point was to streamline the process. I would like to speak to that.
Well, I mean, yes, if you took out the provision that said that you gave the council notice in time to rescind if they wanted to, that would streamline the process, yeah, that would. Just the way this was, you know, it's drafted currently, you know, at the same time, because you're in effect retaining for new events, a council function to approve or disapprove these, you know, how then, let's say you have a change in council, or there's an event that goes poorly, one year, how then does the council weigh back in and say, wait a minute, you know, I wanna take that back and reconsider that event, or something like that, so, I'm sure that, you know, I'm thinking that that was the plan that was drafted here.
That comes to my earlier point, say if it went badly the first time, town administrator or whoever the designee is, let's, okay, go ahead, we'll let you do it, you can serve alcohol, alcohol, they're planning, they give a good license, they spend all the money, and then all of a sudden, we pull the rug out from under them, just because the piece of paper comes back, which I agree with, we should have a review process there. I'm just saying, with the 30-day review and everything else, they're doing the same thing that they're doing now. It just gives, you know, someone as council president, Hushaw was saying, a warm and fuzzy, that, oh yeah, we can serve alcohol, we can go ahead and do it now, and then, but they do all the planning, they go ahead, they spend the time, effort, money, and then they still have the potential to lose that ability if they went bad.
I'd have to agree. If it's... If it comes back in 30 days, it's worthless.
You feel like the only thing that we're doing is, is they would submit maybe to town staff saying, hey, this is my alcohol permit that I want to be, and we're making town staff rush to put it on the agenda, or to get a piece of paper ready so that the council can see it. Really, we're only making town staff do more work faster, rather than get it submitted within the 60 days of a town council meeting, or what have you. We still have to say...
If it comes back to the council, there's, Tom, there's...
There's no, there's really no that thing.
I was not aware that, in each of the cities, the ordinance, or if it comes back to the council, it's taken out. I would like to see it handled at the executive level, to streamline the process, to stop that 30-day review, that was the intent, that's still in there. I say table it, strike it, bring it back, council consideration, but for me, that's useless.
So, Tom, this is a question for you, because of my involvement with NANSA and hosting other events, should I not vote on this, vote making a conflict?
Well, it's not conflict of interest as we define it under our ordinance. It's up to you, though, to your discretion, if you think, that there might be other reasons to...
But given your experience, what is your position?
Given my experience?
I'm not there with you.
Personally, if it's a repeat event, say, like chili cook-off, Oktoberfest, ambassadors, 5K, some of these sort of stiggle events that are in town annually, I don't think council needs to see it.
I would like to just reject the thought, so Carl's point was that if it goes badly, then he would like the ability to, you know, prove it for the next year.
Absolutely.
Well, what I'd like to see happen is that there'd be some type of oversight, and so after the event, if it went poorly, that would be, you know, that would be cited by the town administrator, or there'd be some...
Chief Doug would be the one that would report on it.
Right. But there should be some type of law internally kept by the staff on those events, and then whether or not there were any issues, so a check to say, it's fine, so that when it comes up, and he were to look at it, and the town administrator were to look at it the other day, all he had to do is look at that law and say, yeah, we didn't have any problems. If there were problems, then it wouldn't be approved.
Right.
And that we don't really, I don't feel like I have to get involved, I feel as though I approved it the first time, and that there needs to be oversight, and after that, I don't know if that necessarily...
If there's still our side, we're just switching it from a legislative, every 30 days, to a board panel decision, to an administrative, that counts.
So can we say by the next council meeting, we usually end up talking about town events anyways here at the table, if by the next council meeting, if no one raised any concerns, we could say that maybe the alcohol permit would be permissible the following year, and then not come back, and then it would be in the mayor's hands at that point, and then it would bypass the council?
So can I make an encouragement, something that we have, that makes sure?
I would, I would like to make a recommendation at table this to next month, and then I'll work on the wording with Tom to come up, so that we can negate the council, and then at least have some checkup on that?
Yeah.
Would you be comfortable with that?
Yeah. I'm comfortable with that, yeah.
Okay, all right.
All right, and we will table 2019-7 until next month. All right. So moving on to 2019-6, that's the budget amendment for Town View Community Picknick Area, and that's for introduction. I'll move that we introduce it.
I'll second.
Then, you got a second for Jason?
We had 30,000 in last year, and this took 10,000 in the end of last year, and we want 10,000.
Does anyone at the table need some amplifying information on that, for the... Not hearing anything, I think we'll just move on then, and we'll be able to discuss it by next month. Okay, 2019-8, that's our open burning violations penalties, and that's for introduction as well. Someone?
I'll introduce. Oh, sorry, unless, oh, okay, okay, I'll let Jason go. Oh man, I didn't see your hand. I'll catch it off. I'll let you do this. Councilwoman?
I'll second.
Okay, 30 seconds. Okay, so that'll be on for next month. I appreciate the people who came out and spoke during public comments, that'll give us something to think about as we're reviewing it between now and next month. 2019-9 is a text amendment, and that's Neighborhood Professional District, for introduction, referral to the Planning Commission, and I believe that it's at a public hearing, but we'll see if we can get that part. So, I'll go ahead and move that we introduce it, and within the same words, can I recommend it to planning, can that be one motion? Okay, I'll move that we introduce it and refer it to planning, to the Planning Commission. I see Roxanne out there. Is there a second on that? Okay, all right. Yeah, because of the timing of everything, we could set a public hearing for September, would you recommend, or how does everybody feel about doing that before the town council meeting in September? Which is on September 9th, it would be, we'd be setting the meeting day tonight, and then we would, you know, get planning's input prior to September 9th, and I guess if you don't have the input ready by then, then we won't be able to do it. But for now, we can say 7:00 start time on the September 9th meeting for the public hearing, that sound okay? Okay, so, tentatively, that's what we have, so...
We have 60 days, right?
Yeah, well, 60 days, we need 60 days, then obviously...
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
All right. All right, you got that, Holly, Kelly?
Yeah.
All right. For introduction, we have 2019-11, which is the revised sign ordinance. And, Maddie, you wanna move one?
I would love to introduce the sign ordinance, because this came to me when I first got on the planning commission in 2009, so I would be more than happy to do it, and I will be happy to second.
All right, sweet.
I'll agree.
All right, well, good job on that, finally getting it done, so...
Long road.
Okay, next is 2019-12, which is APFO, Open Space, and that is for introduction. I'll move that we introduce it, and there's a second. Carl's got something on that. Tom is earning a moment on that at this point, or no?
Well, because it poses changes to chapter 98 in part, it does have to be referred to the planning commission.
Okay, all right. Should we refer it to Mike?
Yes. Hey, can I rescind, make a reservation, we rescind my second on this, this is not what the ordinance I was thinking about.
Okay.
So, I rescind my second on this.
I will second it.
All right, I'm seconding it, and referral to the Planning Commission on that as well.
I think you better move that public meeting.
All right.
Okay.
Well, you got the sign ordinance done, so, you know what the penalty is for being efficient and doing a good job, so...
Yeah.
You get a reward.
Come back, please.
All right, 2019-13 is Downtown Zone Regulations on Apartments, and that's for introduction. Does someone like to introduce that?
Yes, I would like to introduce ordinance number 2019-13, an ordinance to amend part two of the Code of the Town of Mount Airy, entitled General Legislation, Chapter 112, entitled Zoning, Article 2, entitled General Regulations, Section 112-7, entitled All Street Parking, Article 5, entitled Provisions Governing Commercial Districts, Section 112-37.1, entitled Downtown Section 112-37.1 entitled downtown zone. And Article 8 entitled Board of Appeals, Section 112-62 entitled special exceptions.
All right. And is there a second for that?
I will second, but I will not repeat all of that.
All right, and guess where this one's coming?
Yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome.
It's your cake day.
Merry Christmas.
That's okay.
I think we both cheek through Thanksgiving. Next is ordinance 2019-14, which is a budget amendment for cleaning services.
Not going to planning.
It is not going to planning. The first company that we had passed last month for cleaning services apparently ran into some problems with being able to provide those services. So we went to the second company on that list. So we're trying to pass this as an emergency, so it requires four votes. I will move it in. Is there a second? And any discussion? All in favor say aye. And that's unanimous, so it passes. 2019-8 is to authorize the consumption and possession in open containers of alcoholic beverages on public property for the cyclocross bike race event at Watkins Park. And that's for adoption as well. So someone else like to move that in?
I'll move it.
Okay, Jason moved it. And Pam seconds. And any discussion on that?
So Gina, I do have a question. Have they applied for the Carroll County one day alcohol permit yet?
I believe they have, but I haven't heard back yet.
Okay. And have you seen the plan for the beer garden?
No, I haven't. No, I'm not for the beer garden. I've seen the race route. And I talked to Brian about the route and confirmed the date, but it's just kind of recent, so we haven't actually seen it yet.
Would this be a little bit early since we have not seen any of the alcohol permit, the plan for the beer garden? Or anything to enable this to next, next month? Just to make sure they meet everything, all the requirements before we go ahead and approve it? Or would that leave a little bit before on the time?
What was our date again?
October 27th.
7th.
Yeah.
I guess we need a September 9th.
Were you asking to see a map on this?
No, I think we're not, we're aware that A, that they've only applied for the permit, they have not received it yet. We have not seen a map or design. Oh, the beer garden, and I think that's what Pam was saying too, is like, have we seen the details on this? Also, I believe she mentioned there were an accusation there'll be beer trucks more so than just the beer garden. So that's kind of a, might be a new type of thing down there, especially at Watkins. Due to that, that cyclocross going on, the parking at Watkins, the whole thing.
So if we just got a report from Gina, would her word be okay that they had got everything? Because I'll make an, I'll make an motion to pass with hearing back from Gina that everything is good.
That's part of the concern that you're working through just looking at it. Because now that you're looking at, I did see the map, and I gotta review this. Very closely going back into what we should have done on the executive side of the House and staff. You're doing it in council table in front of the public that's now waiting. And it's, it's not the right process. Sorry, I'm off on soapbox.
No, I mean, I would just like to wait and see to make sure we see how everything's going to plan out down, down there more so. And to get on my soapbox, I'm just beginning to get the feeling that every event that seems to be coming to Watkins Town or anything is coming before this council requests an alcohol. And some of the events I personally think that begin at 8, 9, even 6 a.m. here kind of concerns me that they're betting on selling alcohol to make money or to attract people. Which I would rather have the event attract the people than what is being sold, sold there. So that's, so I'll get off my soapbox on that one then.
So watching every four years, but.
No, that is a good point, because I even thought about that myself. But when they get the permit, is there a time that they're allowed to start selling it? So even though the event starts at 6:00, they don't get to sell beer at 6:00?
Well, they mentioned a pretty rigorous application, and they do have to specify when they're going to be serving the alcohol. And there, you know, Carroll County has to approve their plan.
Yeah. But I will say that when the permits are issued, they're for the entire day. They're not limited to the time they submit. So it is very specific to a day. So Oktoberfest at, you know, midnight technically, they can start selling beer until 11:59 that night. I have no problem approving this alcohol resolution, but I was just curious if they finished the rest of the process yet.
See, depending on 5Ks, they're generally, if you run a big race, and it's something that's kind of standard, whatever your opinions are now. They're not right or wrong, and your opinion is, there's nothing against that. But usually the race ends if you just run in 3, 5, 10, half marathon. People have a beer, and then you say early after the race ends, but the event closes down by noon, everybody's gone. So it's not an ongoing thing. It's pretty quick launch.
I will make a motion to approve the request.
Okay. Second? Is there a second?
I'll second when I hear back from Gina. So I'm just gonna add, will you hear from Gina on? You'll, you'll get some recommendation that they have applied their liquor license test. So I'll holler them on that. I will pass with Gina's word.
Tom, are we going now or are we waiting to hear a word?
Well, we. We need to make word, you're second, and say contingent upon them getting.
Yep. Contingent, Carroll County's one day alcohol permit.
Right. But let's make the contingent upon that. If you don't get it, then they will say okay.
Now we can vote.
All right, so contingent on, on hearing from Gina that they received the county's permit, okay? All in favor, say aye. 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 And all opposed?
Nay.
Do we got one thing?
Yeah.
Okay.
Council President, for you to move on.
Yeah.
On the burn ordinance, I need us to discuss, I forget, and just for the public to know, can we refer that also to the fire department for comment?
We already did.
Yeah. So make sure that happened.
All right, no unfinished business, and now we're down to new business. First thing on the agenda is the town administrator appointment. And and I think what we're going to do is if the resident council is okay with it, then we will end up tabling that town administrator appointment until next month. Okay? Everybody okay with that? Got the Mount Airy pharmacy lease. And Tom, I think you might have some words on that.
Sure. So this is for council's approval under the charter. Council approves such things as leases. Here, this is a renewal for three years. And essentially, under the same terms as existed under the prior term. So even the rent, for instance, is the same. There's only one provision that the pharmacy asks for, and it has to do with either the sale of the business of the pharmacy or the death of its principal before the end of this lease term. It would allow effectively the conclusion of that lease over a relatively short amount of time. Which, given our ultimate thought about that space in the train station, like, well, actually coincide with the town's ultimate direction with that space. So that's the only provision. It's paragraph 18, page 10 of 13. It said relatively short amount of time, 18 months is how long the lease would last. So it's in theory possible that this term expires before three years under that provision. But otherwise, it's three year lease under the same exact terms as existed before.
Chris, one question here. Do the dates on page one need to be changed at all? Because they're like April, May, we're approving this in August.
I would leave this in April. The term actually began in April.
Okay.
For an old term. Was it, it took a lot to get this from the pharmacy. It didn't matter to us because they're on a month-to-month penalty. It really started the lease, and we approved it, passed the same round.
Okay. Just want to ask.
Okay, I think I made the motion. Did someone second it?
I'll second.
Okay. All right. And any, any more discussion? All in favor say aye. All right. Okay, and that passes unanimously. Next is the Carroll County Government Town-County Agreement. Is there anything?
No, that's exactly the same terms as before except the numbers. Although, every word is the same. And as before, run dangers.
I'll move to approve it. Is there a second on that?
I'll second it.
Okay, Carl seconds. And discussion on that? Anyone have any questions?
Just one question. I'm always asking questions here. Upon reading it on page two, the distance that the county needs to identify us with any master plan updates or revision was one mile. Would we have any benefit by changing that to two miles now? Just to get a better picture of any changes that might be impacting the town?
So this provision came about several years ago when the town had a petition for annexation for several properties south of I-79. Ultimately, that annexation petition came to be withdrawn. There was a dispute over whether or not those commissioners owed the town expenses costs. As a result of a settlement with them, we asked, we were asked to ask the county to include this provision to pervade it in the Town-County Agreement, and has been in there since probably the last seven, 10 years or so.
We're doing what they can. Thank you, Tom.
I actually thought it was two miles.
Yeah, it's two miles. But one, so I didn't.
Are there any other questions or comments?
I just have a couple of questions. So Tom, the letter dated July 15th, and the second year for over, does the Town County program distribution is also reduced in accordance with section 4G? So you said the numbers remain the same?
No, I said everything but the numbers are the same. Numbers change every year.
Okay, okay. So they, you're giving us the last two?
Under 4G.
They could be that number goes up and down.
It has, it does.
Okay, well, I just wanted to make sure I was reading it correctly. And then the other question I hear was the funding grants available to Mount Airy. So they're saying upon execution of this agreement, so a cost payment from this budget for the fiscal year of 19 to 20, a grant in the amount of $119,730. So is that for the storage?
I'm sorry, which revision are you reading?
It's on page three.
Okay.
Of funding grants available to Mount Airy. Looks like we're going to get a grant of $192,730.
Right.
So that's.
And that changes every year?
Okay. So I just wanted to make sure. That was for the storage, firm water, the other thing?
Here, call Dick. I know you're back there.
You know, I think I don't have the paper in front of me.
Right.
That may be the dues we pay towards the member in of agreement on stormwater management to meet permit requirements. I believe it.
Thank you. It's actually the next page under National Pollution District Innovation System in the DES that addresses that.
All right, let's see. Any other questions or comments? All in favor, say aye. All right, next we have the improvements to the municipal parking lot, Center Street, Cross Street, and Park Avenue from the engineering team. Barney, did you want to talk about that some?
Sure.
Go ahead.
So we have in the budget what we had planned for this year, again, trying to move the right steps with the downtown vision plan with Center Street going through, what we do with the flat iron building and things like that. So these are just kind of some initial steps to kind of get us started, but not go all the way on either of those items.
We're not committing to the other projects.
Correct.
As far as, correct, it's under Pam, that's who understands it very thoroughly.
So these improvements need to be made regardless, right?
The only caveat is.
Let me, let me explain them and then you can decide that. Because again, there's a lot of new counsel from when we started this process that I think everybody knew. So the very first thing that kind of really has to happen is we need two lanes coming down Center Street to Main Street. So we need a dedicated right, dedicated left. Otherwise, what's happening already is you get a lot of stacking going up because all the right turners want to have to wait for the left turner. So by putting dual lanes coming down, that saves a lot of, a lot of that weight to have. So that's the first part. And if you look at the street pictures, the first picture is just a highlighted yellow in that area. Kind of give you an idea of where, where we're talking in the following. The second part would be to, the idea is to get improved Park Avenue, to make it one-way going from Main Street up to Cross Street. And to, that would allow us to put in angle parking on both sides. And before you could make that one-way going up, you would have to reroute the traffic that's coming westbound on Park Avenue over to Center Street. And so the second part would be improving Cross Street to get that traffic over there. And then the third part would be working on Park Avenue, and we would have to put up a wall, cut into the bank some to get enough width to do angle parking on both sides. And then in the end, we would end up with Park Avenue going one-way, not people looking over their shoulder trying to, you know, see cars coming up from beyond the corner, or haven't used a mirror. Even the mirror could go away at that point. So one, one of the issues is the pedestrian crossing right there. People are looking way back. Once they see a clearing, they start to take off, and then there's people walking right there, so. And we're trying to get rid of some of the safety concerns.
What you're asking for tonight, is this, is this actually bound to a category that requires a motion for this to occur?
Well, the recommendations, so that was to kind of explain what we're doing and again, make sure everybody's on board with.
But it's in the budget.
Yes, it's in the budget.
It's over $30,000.
Now, if we spend over $30,000, then that's supposed to come back to you. What I'm asking, we did this for the maintenance building when we did that. If you just pre-approve that, as long as we get our bids, we go with the lowest responsive bidder for each. We're gonna kind of act as the GC on the project, and so we'll hire the substitute, those individual components. But if something's over $30,000, just asking to have it pre-approved now rather than bringing each thing. than bringing each thing back each time.
Okay. So is this more of a consensus of opinion or?
I think you have to approve the funds.
Yeah, even though it's individual.
It's in the budget.
I know.
Or we approve the funds.
We have a lot of things in the budget. We go, we, we get bids. Once we get the bids, we have to bring it back to the approved out to spend.
Yeah, so my question is, are you lumping a bunch of smaller bids into one huge bid and therefore we're approving a, essentially a, a large amount of money for, for several small projects?
True, in a sense, yes. But it might be to different contractors.
All right. Well, I mean, first of all, I can, I understand the Center Street going down to Main Street and you need the right turn lane, well, and I do, I do understand that. I've never been on board with, you know, the Park Avenue idea personally. So, so I'm not okay with, with some of the steps that are in here. You know, so I don't think that, you know, from my standpoint that, you know, that I'm okay with the overall product that you have here. I'm okay with components of it, but not the overall product. So, so I'm kind of out on this one because I'm not, I wouldn't approve this overall concept.
So that, that's kind of why it's brought to you.
Yeah.
This is again, to make sure everybody's on the board with everything.
Right.
And if you want to change something, then what do you want to change it to?
Well, one thing I'd like to add too is, is the liaison for the streets and roads. I don't know how this process works, but I would think that this would come to streets and roads first so that we would be aware that there were going to be major changes to the road. And, you know, Park Avenue, correct me if I'm wrong, but shouldn't the public be more aware before we make that decision? I know it's in the downtown vision plan, but that's not something that's been bought off by everybody in our community. So the people that live on Park Avenue, shouldn't they be aware that this is going to be happening? And the people on Cross Street, they should be aware that their streets don't be a lot busier because people will be going down Cross Street to get to Center Street. And I have an issue, I just would like to make sure that it's safe to make the left-hand turn from Center Street on Main Street because visually it's very hard to make a left-hand turn because of the fence.
The railing.
The railing. So I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page, but I, I don't know if the public, if we're supposed to have a public hearing about this because this is a major change to one of our main roads.
So I, I'll add, since I was a sitting member when all this was gone, this was either last year or even the year before that, we were holding public meetings here in Town Hall when, when this phase one was, was being brought to us and taking a look and having public comment then. The, the past sitting council for phase one wanted to move forward with it at that time now that majority, me, really, because I don't even think you were sitting, I never did that.
Two years in.
So, um, I don't, I don't really have a problem. I mean, I've already heard everybody, I've already heard all the concerns, the fire department, I've, I've heard it all through phase one, two, and three. For the benefit of the sitting council now, I have no problem addressing your concerns or whatever process you guys would like to report, but this is where, this has been coming from, from two or three years now.
Actually longer than that.
Yeah.
It's about eight years or.
Or it's about eight years.
When we were doing the meetings here, meetings, there was.
Two, two and a half years ago, it was January, two and a half years ago that we, we.
Right. All of the days right there.
So, so as I understand it, these improvements, as Jason has said, have already been discussed and approved. And now all Barney is asking for release of the fund so that he can move forward with it. Is that correct?
Yes. I don't know that shutting Park Avenue one-way has been approved, but it's, it comes to a point where I hope this council starts to move or take off the table. We've been kicking a can down the road for up to eight years. We tell, and I know, and I know, actually when Patty was sitting there talking about my head day, we ought to do this with Jason, at, at, we have, we've heard the concerns. So I'm going, y'all are having a good seat.
I've got some concerns, but I do remember sitting in the audience, even back at the community senate discussions when this was proposed, where some of this was proposed. I knew that, and I agree with council president, push area, that Center Street, the addition to Center Street is fine, there's no problem with that, as councilwoman, Washer brought up, there is some, maybe some safety concerns, turning left onto Main Street from Center Street to the rail line, but those could be addressed. But I also remember some of the public was not too happy with bringing Cross Street through the parking lot because of safety, more, more so, because you wouldn't have a Main Street now come cutting through a parking lot with pedestrians cutting across it, which could lead to some pedestrian accidents. I drove that route. I believe there is a potential little bit better route, maybe not bring it as far into the parking lot, maybe a little bit closer to the existing Cross Street road now and then bring it down. You'd have a less chance of cutting into the parking spaces, a less chance of people cutting across, cutting across Cross Street in the parking lot to get down, downtown. I also was concerned with, it looks like there won't be access from Center Street onto Cross Street, but mainly due to their, well, contractor now having the soft storage yard there, they allow large, larger equipment in. That was a concern of mine too. But, um, so that was, I'm not sure if those were ever addressed back in the public hearings or from the previous councils of the route across the parking, parking lot. Also, I'm a little bit concerned with how does this route, are we taking into consideration now with this route with the downtown vision plan, the buildings that we're showing and drawing for that? Or we, would we be spending money now on the proposed Cross Street route? And then later, does that hinder us implementing the vision plan, some phase of it?
Right. To address the Cross Street.
Yeah.
If you look at it, there's a small amount of parking that would be on the east side of the new Cross Street. The shops of yesterday year building.
Okay.
Requires parking. And so I would see some of that parking would be more to that building. Most of the parking that gets used, like today, it's rare that we don't have at least twenty spaces up there available. And so if you think of everybody coming downtown, well, that's those twenty spaces that they probably wouldn't park in first.
Okay.
That would be more overflow. And then the second thing, as far as spending money on Cross Street, we're only talking about putting in some curbs and restriping.
Okay.
It's not a terrible amount of money that we're talking about for that. So as far as meeting the vision plan, they don't show that Cross Street going that way.
Okay.
To me, it's more of a temporary until the shops of yesterday year gets revisited as far as, you know, rebuilding. If we were, they showed another building the same size. I personally didn't agree with the vision plan with the sense that I don't think it shows enough parking.
Correct.
So putting another building, taking away a lot of spaces with that and then having more needs for parking for that, the, the vision plan didn't, unless, unless you count the parking spaces at Calvary that will serve downtown or, you know, those might be a little extreme.
All right. One other thing I noticed when I was driving the route on there, the six spots you have, say on the west side, the longer proposed Cross Street route, it may not work because he, someone put an AC unit into the shops of yesterday year that's rather low.
Yeah.
So I'm not sure if those would be there, but enough of that. But I do have some good, some suggestions on maybe the town might want to look at if we're doing work in the lot, is that, this might be in Pam's area too, is can we consider maybe looking at adding some gas lines down behind the buildings that were run from Chewey's, which is the existing dead end of it now, I believe, behind back that to Cent, Cent, to Center Street if we're doing excavation work back, back there at this time? That might help us out in the long run.
It certainly can be considered.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
With the gas company, and we don't run those lines.
Okay.
But if they chose to run them at Center, they're not there.
But I'm just saying, since you say we're doing excavation work.
We're not doing a lot of excavation across that parking lot.
Okay.
Just, just in the gray area, if you look on the third drawing.
Gotcha.
Just on that one side of that gray area of the Park Avenue.
Okay.
The shaded yellow area.
But you're leveling, you're not digging. So as far as excavation, trying to drag gas lines down to Center Street.
Correct.
You're not digging.
We're not going down any further.
You're just leveling.
Correct.
Gotcha.
So with that said also, BGE won't run a gas line under the assumption that they might put gas in it. There has to be usage for it.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, doesn't the VFW use propane now, switching from propane to gas? Is this a matter of changing some equipment or facilities in it? So that adds some potential there. So I said, there is a potential usage, but yet if we're not trenching along veterans or anything, I thought if we had a hoop and trench, we could consider adding a gas line to it.
So the other thing I would say is Carl, you mentioned safety concerns along the new potential Cross Street.
Okay.
But I actually think by eliminating the traffic coming down Park Street westbound is actually increasing safety because you're not making a blind right turn any longer.
Okay, got, got to directions now, okay, that's me with it.
Yeah.
Gotcha. Now that's, okay, cool.
Would you be okay with the making a, well, I, I think what's here is too big of a bite. I, I think it's more than, than, than we can answer the questions to of Park Avenue residents and, and with the Cross Street modification, I think, and, and then you've got Center Street. I, I do know the downtown vision plan certainly has Center Street improvements on it. And like I said, it sounds like Carl's on board with that too. I think you need to break this down into, you know, just look at the intersection of Main Street and Center Street and bring us one piece that we can, that we can wrap our arms around and, and I'll be pretty much in agreement to. And let's just get that done. You know, get the, the right and left turn lane portion of this done, which would mean from tonight if everybody's in agreement. And, and that is with referral to streets and roads, that's, you know, meeting tomorrow night. Do you hear that, Patty?
I was whispering, I heard you, Patty. This has already went to streets and roads a lot, several years ago. Do you need to comment?
One thing, um.
Go ahead and add.
The concern with the, the Park Avenue, we really don't necessarily have to address anything with that until the decision has been made as to what's going to happen with the flat iron building.
Mm-hmm. So. You can make a one-way now without touching the flat iron.
Right, I know, right.
So you don't have to make a decision on the flat iron.
But I will say, as a Park Avenue resident, I'm not close to that. I never come down Park Avenue to come into Main Street. I always take Cross Street. Always.
Yeah.
And that mirror is always wrong because the truck is always hitting it or, you know, went off kilter. So I always use Cross Street now as a Park Avenue resident. I'm not one of the ones that would be affected by the one-way, but I think it would be much better. I do agree you need to talk to them, but it is definitely, it would be a definite addition, would be a better safety, more safety than it is right now.
Talk to them and stuff.
The residents that are on the, on that Park Avenue.
There's, I don't think there is any.
There aren't any residents. There is a, there is somebody.
Well, there's businesses, there's some, there's businesses.
No, there's two, there's, well, no, there is that one house there that sits next to Chewey's. There are residents there.
There are, yeah.
And the Dixons and the gentleman that lives in the corner and the lady's house on Cross Street. There are residents there.
I know there's a, within the corner of Cross.
I don't know if Cummins been specifically hurt on making it one-way, I know it's been discussed forever, but Cummins has been hurt on closing and all the flat iron options. That's something hopefully this council will say, yeah, or no.
I think we would. I, I still think it's, we would give you an answer, yes or no, but, but I just think this is too big of a bite for.
The one-way opening should be reapprised. So I'm not so sure.
Yeah, I think the one-way should be reapprised and I, I think you need to take it closer over there, this proposed Cross Street.
Now, they have looked at that, I do know that, but that's been several hundred years.
Our, our traffic consultant also weighed in on that and they're actually the ones who helped lay that out.
And the fire department also.
As an alternative, because the fire company, the fire company had a problem with the steepness of Cross Street coming off the center, so it'd be able to turn right there and the blind spot around the building. So that's why it was moved in front of the building.
And that's predicated on the closing of Park.
Exactly.
Where you would have to go up to Center.
Exactly.
But now with it being one-way, it would be better for us to go right up Park and not have to worry. But our concern.
Right, that's why.
We couldn't use Park.
Yeah, the fire company was more worried about closing the park, so that was, that was their concern.
But they looked at it as.
But this wouldn't close that at this point.
Right, but let me just ask you a question. So if we kept Park Avenue open one-way, would there be a need to do this proposed Cross Street or could we just improve Cross Street to Center Street? And then you don't give up all those parking spaces, you still would have the parking spaces there because the fire trucks would be able to still use Park Avenue to get to that side of the town.
Again, it was just trying to improve site distance around the building. So if you have a lot more traffic that's going to be coming down Park going in Cross Street and it's going to be going right in front of those residents on, on Cross Street, this reroute would also move away from those residents. But then when, when you get to Center Street, then there's a little bit of a site distance around that building. So people are going to really slow down there compared to if we went the new route. So there's several factors that play into why, you know, this was rerouted or suggested for reroute.
So Paul, you were the question I asked you early on, is if we give this, does this mean that the council, which are newer to some of this, and some of y'all have seen it, some of the around the public hearings, you get it, move to the neighborhood, you're aware of all the public hearing, all the charades that we held on the flat iron building. But I asked if we were to do this, were, would it be committing us to doing the flat ironing of that because at that point, obviously I'm comfortable with the council, what's ready to commit to that? You're not, you said, no, these are just agreements we need to make, but with the one caveat, this is going to close. We do have to close Park one-way, so for that, I think that's where Larry's pausing, that maybe we should go ahead and announce the one-way of public, of, of Park Avenue for public hearing. Here's some comments, you're in here, Paul, and then hopefully it's likely then we should make a decision.
So do you want to have it go to Streets and Roads first, let them weigh in, then come back for a public hearing?
Well, you know, depending on what the rest of the council, we could send this whole thing to, you know, certainly to Streets and Roads and let them review the entire package. That's, that's fine by me. I, I think that even between now and next month, the only thing I will be able to have some comfort around is the fact that we need to improve Center Street. And I think that, you know, improvements to Center Street is certainly, you know, you know, the first step to getting the downtown vision plan done. And so I think we're moving in the right direction by doing that. I just think this is, you know, as I keep saying, too big of a chump. You know, it's, it could be broken into three parts. We could work on Center Street, then you could come back after. We got that moving and everything's, you know, in place and then you could come back and say, hey, let's do the improvements on Cross Street and we could all sink our teeth into that one, get a feel for, you know, getting that done and, and then you could come in after that and say, okay, let's take care of Park Avenue.
So the only, only issue with that is you have somebody doing concrete curves coming down Center Street, there's really not a lot of concrete work, there's a little bit.
Mm-hmm.
There's a little bit of paving, we're going to have to fill in where it's grass now. And then you're going to do same thing on Cross, they're going to charge you an arm and a leg to come out, to have to remobilize every, every step.
You're looking at a concrete scale.
So trying to, trying to see how we can, trying to keep one moving right after the other and then keep those contractors moving so that if you piece build too small, then you're going to get much higher prices.
Okay.
So that's, I'd like to kind of work it all together. So that's, I'd like to kind of work it all together if we can. You still have to do it in a phase, but at least know what's...
So you can't do Center Street independently?
You can, you can.
But you're saying you're not gaining because you have the concrete there. So once you just pause on everything, go out, I think Streets and Roads has already reviewed this plan. However, not the one-way of Park Avenue. We definitely should, might go there and look at the other plan, too, again. There's eight members there, but at some point, it's moving.
So I do have a question. This has already been approved by a previous town council, right?
It's in the budget.
It's in the budget, so it's time to make the decision and move forward, not rehash it again.
Just for exactly what was approved in the budget? To do the Center Street interchange there? I don't know that we run into the weeds as far as you're aware.
It was presented as the Phase 1 improvements for the flatiron. Is how it was presented previously. Again, it does multiple things. You're going to have a net gain in parking. You're going to have improved traffic control, safer, better safety at Park Avenue and Main Street because it'd be one-way, you don't have the... The problem is more for people coming down the street towards Main Street, not so much the people going up.
So tell Larry, so maybe just pause on everything. We have a whole public hearing before the next council meeting. We post that Park Avenue's going one-way, do the public town in comment, get Streets and Roads' time in comment. You just pause, you pause eight years, we pause three more days. I do see the point, Park Avenue going one-way is not going to be discussed.
Patty, when is the next Streets and Roads meeting?
Actually, ours is going to be September 3rd, so it'll be the Tuesday after Labor Day, so it will be before
Good, okay.
the town council meeting. And to that point, I would just like to say there doesn't seem to be clarity on exactly what was approved in budget. And we're all new, the majority of us are new on this town council. So I just think another month to make sure that, you know, we know what was approved. But I don't remember hearing Park Avenue going one-way was approved.
Right, nothing was approved previously when we looked at the Phase 1 flatiron building, which is essentially what we're looking at here.
Right.
It wasn't approved at that time. All we did is we put it in the budget for this year, the budget was approved. Again, that's why I need to come back to you with, here's exactly what we're doing, and you make that. So I was trying to get that upfront rather than bring it back. But if you want to take that time and go Streets and Roads and public hearing.
Yeah, I have one more to see really beneficial.
Yeah, and I certainly appreciate the work, you know, that you've done, continue to do.
Can we post, John? Can we post? I don't know how we're...
You're going to have two public hearings, September.
What's the other public?
The other public hearing is one of the things that you're known, one of the things that you refer to.
If it comes back, you have scheduled a public hearing like 45 minutes ago.
At 7:00. I don't think that will last a half an hour. Like, we could split the two and do 7:00 to 7:15, 7:15 to 7:30.
I think you're going to, I think, step of Park Avenue is going to, I think you...
Bring some people in.
Yeah, I guess. Maybe you can?
Well, that neighborhood is a fresh one, wasn't it? Yeah, I think that one.
Oh, yeah.
That will probably last five minutes, 10 minutes.
Do I answer it, two stories?
I'd rather push the regular council meeting back if we have to. Yeah, but start at 7:00. Get the first public hearing out of the way and then go into public hearing if we need to on the Park Avenue on this night. Does all that sound okay? So we're basically tabling you for a month. Appreciate it, thank you. Next, we have a reduction in performance bond for Heingroove Manor. John, you got some info on this?
Yes, so basically, the developer is asking to receive $10,593. Or no, I'm sorry, excuse me.
$367.
Thank you. That was the original, that's the original bond amount. And the total reduction, of course.
$202,000?
So no, so currently, what's remaining is the $10,593.39.
We're looking at the glare from the glare page, are we?
I'm sorry, what?
What are we looking at if it gets $10,000? Okay, I got you.
So let's see, recommendation, partial release of...
We're reducing $202,000.
Right, portion of the road, paving, curves, etc. So we're still retaining the $10,593.39 plus a 10% retention for a total remaining bond of $11,652.70. So they basically had done all the infrastructure except for the top code. And that's basically, once it's all completed, everything's built there, then they'll do the top code and then they'll ask the final release.
Just one second. I do have, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
And I think Barney might know the answer, might know where this is going to go with this question. Back right around the election, there was a Facebook post by a gentleman on North Warfield about the runoff, is this at the Heingroove up by the Cross from Cemetery? There was a major stormwater management issue with runoff coming down from this down onto properties in North Warfield, like General House, pool, shed, and things. And I believe some things have been taken care of, but I'm not sure if it's all been taken care of. And I'm just making sure, I just want to make sure that do we have to release all this bond to make sure? Just to make sure that if there's still a stormwater management issue, that those people can be, that problem can be rectified with this bond?
Well, I can answer that. So part of the problem for that situation is they have a bunch of bio-retention areas at the bottom of that cul-de-sac, and all those bio-retention areas are closed off currently. And the one, the storm drain inlet, was actually blocked off as well. That's been rectified. So currently, any rainwater that's going down there is going into the stormwater management facility in their storm drains. And then, once the project's completed, the top code's on, there's inlets for the bio-retention facilities will be removed. And then they'll be able to handle any storm management that's been designed for that pavement. So at this current time, the only thing that's open is our storm drain inlet. There's bio-retention areas, I think there's four of them there. Will currently absorb a lot of that storm management prior to even going into our storm drain system. So I mean, I understand what you're asking. That's up to your purview. I mean, I think that there shouldn't be an issue. I haven't heard anything else since then. I think there was also a failure, there's also a failure with the super sill fence that they had there, and that was addressed through Carroll County Permits, Inspection, and Site.
I would just like to make sure that since we've had, say, construction stormwater management concerns or issues, that once everything's completed, that there's no more stormwater management issues before we release a good portion of this bond back to the developer. Because sometimes issues do not present themselves until after everything's done, too.
I also think that situation at that time, currently, there was a failure with the fence. There's also unstabilized soil, the closure of the storm drain inlet and the blocked off bio-retention facilities. Because basically, you don't want to have a bunch of construction material going to these bio-retention facilities because if you do, then they're going to fail. So, I mean, I think, I think this is adequate, but it's really your purview.
And the final 10%, that doesn't get released till one year after everything's completed. So that's a one-year warranty period. So we'll still have bonding even after everything's done.
But you're just recommending the $202,000.
That's correct.
That's what they're requesting, that's what the developer requested.
It's actually a smaller amount than what the developers requested. Developers requested basically everything. And we've cut that back to the $202,000.
All right, so make a motion that we have a reduction in the performance bonding. Number 1150054 with staff's recommendation for a partial release of the bonding in the amount of $202,42.65. Does that say? All right, any more discussion? May I have that say aye? The last, we are down to three boards. So we got the mayor's report?
Thank you. I'll hold my formal report for a week or so, and then I'll send it down. We'll post it on Facebook page and local media. We did receive a nice card from the Dieter family. And this is in relationship to the, on 7/22, we had a mini tornado came through. I know that Patty called me, I think Blair jumped in his truck and went out there. I'll let you all know, the two gentlemen responded within an hour pretty quickly, moved that tree off of that road. Brian Johnson and John McDonough, the council, right? So hats off to them. Then again, last Saturday, we had a major line failure and the whole crew was called in. Yes, we had Eric Stockdale, Brian Bowman, Stephen Smith and Steve Muller. They all came in, three of them worked 12 hours on Saturday to get that water line back up to the west end, so they should be commended.
They were out there digging the hole, that's all.
So it's kind of a buzzkill, all of a sudden, have your Saturday back. They responded, got our citizens back on lines, so I want to thank them. And the big news that everybody's waiting for, thank you, John, for the updates. We have been reaching out to Humbers to make sure that they are moving forward because not only somebody that business has a right to rebuild it at a time when we need to, that business is also impacting all of other businesses that apply to the local field of pain. So we just want to make sure that we're helping to assist any way we can to facilitate getting that Humbers reopened. And it's looking more like, I think we said in October, it's looking more like November. By Christmas, maybe, but...
By Friday, Jim.
Yeah, we are pushing, John is staying on, we want to see activity as much as possible. Thank you, that was your report. I do have a reappointment or appointment. Oh, looky there, it's Richard Swanson, number one. Dick, we hope that you would accept the council word to size and consent your appointments in the water and sewer commission. My recommendation.
Motion to approve that?
Yes, I can.
Second. May I have that? All right, beautification and Parks and Land.
All right, I'll try and make this brief. The meeting, the most recent meeting was held until, say, July 16th. Just like to report that hopefully everyone has seen the new banner sign coming into town from I-70 and South Main. It was designed with the ability to have banners placed on it to inform people of town-sponsored events. Also, the benches for pickleball courts on Prospect have arrived and will be installed shortly if they have not been done so already. The beautification commission purchased and planted shrubs and flowers that were in the train station gardens. And the commission would like to put a thank out to town resident George Guara?
Is that anything else?
Yeah.
What, Guara?
Guara, for the donation of Black Eyed Susan's Ticcy Corpseys and St. John's Ward for the town, for the train station gardens. Also, the commission members Beverly Blanche and Tina Swanson appreciated the positive comments that they received from the mayor, the Mount Area Historical Society members and the general public while they were doing those gardens at the train station. Lastly, the commission meetings are held every third Tuesday of the month. Next meeting is August 20th, 7:00 p.m. at Town Hall. Now to the parks and recs. The meeting was held on July 18th, 2019. Town resident Michael Rosquest came to update the board on the upcoming Mount Area Olympics event that will be held on August 10th from 3:00 to 5:00. You may have noticed some of the new small little red signs around town advertising the event. And with the web address, I believe, is mountareolympics.com. This is the second year that this event has been held. It will be held in conjunction with the camp night coming up this Saturday. As I said earlier, we'll run from 3:00 to 5:00. And I was, another pickleball court item, the Prospect Park pickleball courts have been resurfaced and are in the process of being restripped to allow for three courts there instead of the currently one. I believe there was two there unless they're sold. Two announced, I believe there's still room for another one. They just have to find the time to strike it. We do already have the net for it, so that's not a problem. Also, Village Gate Playground update. The town has installed a new border around the mulch area because the old wooden railroad ties were 4x6 and were rotted, so they installed a new plastic tie or rounder that Brian Johnson seems to love at the parks to retain the mulch in there. A all-inclusive playground update at Watkins Park. The Recreation and Parks staff is in the process of applying for grants to cover the cost of the inclusive playground. And I believe Ava's T-21 Foundation, did I get that right? Is raising money to offset some of the costs also for that. The Watkins Park improvement, a bike rack has just been installed at the Watkins Park Tennis Courts complimentary of local boy scout Jacob Loom. And this was part of his Eagle Scout project. And now for the upcoming events around town. This Saturday, August 10th, is Camp Night. It's been a fun event that's been held for the past several years. So please come out and pitch a tent if you want. You wish you can start pitching tents at 3:00 p.m. Camp Night festivities will begin at 5:00. And for those who stay the night, breakfast will be provided on Sunday. Entertainment during the event will be provided by the musician Slim Harrison, a roaming illusionist that we've had downtown before, and the movie Ralph Breaks the Internet at Dusk. As mentioned earlier, the Mount Area Olympics will be held also on this day from 3:00 to 5:00 prior to the start of Camp Night. August 17th is hot summer days and nights. This event is a rescheduled date from 7/17. That was rescheduled due to excessive heat. It was, I don't know, hot summer days and nights had to be rescheduled because of excessive heat. That was one of the days where the heat index was 110. So it is understandable, especially with little kids out there giving sidewalk chalk art and everything, but it's just a funny little thing here. August 24th is the town's 125th anniversary, which is celebrating Mount Area. This event will be held along Main Street from 5:00 to 9:00. And there will be a kids' event at the south end of town with a Bowman Alley courtesy of Mount Area Lanes. And I believe the kids' events runs from 5:00 to 8:00. Just closes now or earlier. Another upcoming event is August 31st, Galatians 5K. September 14th is the Lions Club, I believe it's Ford County's Lions Club obstacle course. So that might be a new little event here. And last but not least, September 28th, the Second Annual Oktoberfest. The Recreation and Parks Board meets the Thursday of every month at 7:00 p.m. in Town Hall. The next meeting will be next Thursday, 8:15. That's it?
Thank you, Councilman Munder, and on to Economic Development Planning Commission, Councilwoman Green.
So the Economic Development Commission actually just recently met on July 31st. We split the group into two subcommittees. One to review the town's light ordinance, compare it to our code, and then also reach out to other municipalities to see how they enforce their ordinance. The idea is if we have light properties throughout town, we're not going to encourage new businesses to come to town. So we're going to review it and possibly Economic Development will make recommendations to council for improvement. The second committee is, we're going to, so Sykesville, their businesses came together and collectively... their businesses came together, and collectively, they came up with a program that encourages retail on the first floor and service-type businesses on the upper levels. We are going to also look at other municipalities and come up with a, not an incentive, but encouragement-type program, and present it to the property owners on Main Street to encourage them to turn their first floor into retail restaurant and move their businesses above. So, that's what Economic Development is working on. And I'm actually going to default to Roxanne, the Chair of Planning, for an update because I was not able to make the last meeting. Oh, real quick, our next meeting is August 26th. And Carl gave all the Manza event updates, so...
Oh, sorry. I did not mean to steal your thunder there. Sorry, Patrick.
Okay, so, for the planning commission, the update of the planning commission, most of the council members were there. So, you know that we spent a great deal of time on the discussion of the rezoning requests of the Loslow property, and they just wanted us to have a recommendation and give it to the council. At that point in time, there was other, a gentleman by the name of Dick Cuman came, and we did not have all of his findings or all of the stuff that he was going to be discussing that evening. So, we decided not to make a decision. We will be making a decision at our next meeting. I won't go into the details. I think most of you were there as to what was happening with the state, the Estat line, and what was happening in the history. The open space certification was also discussed, and it was noted that the staff is working on a solution for the downtown zone. Of course, the sign ordinance was completed and has been sent to you for introduction. Yay! And we had further discussion on ad rules and procedures for the commission. We're still discussing those. Leslie and Bill are still working on the expertise section of that procedure. We also began the discussion about the downtown vision plan and the need to review our code, and you're seeing that start to come to fruition, some of the things that are happening that we're dealing with. To review the code and ordinances so we can begin the implementation of the plan and not have to come, you know, if there's something that we need to implement first, that we're starting to work on that. And our next meeting, I thought, was Monday, the 26th, but you said, what's EDC meeting? You said Monday, the 26th?
I think 23rd.
No, it'll be 28th, I think.
It would be Wednesday, the 28th.
28th, okay. Our next meeting is going to be Monday, the 26th, 7:00 PM at Town Hall. We will probably still be meeting Tuesday at 7:00 AM. We're going to have a busy meeting. Any questions?
I actually have more EDC update that I forgot to mention. We, at MML, came up with an action plan for the Main Street gas line. Carl and I are waiting for information from Melissa as to a list of actual property owners so that we can invite all the property owners to a meeting with BGE to educate them and generate the need. So, hopefully, we can get that meeting in the next month.
All right, thank you. Sanitation and Recycling, Mount Area Sustainable Commission, Councilwoman Green, report.
Thank you. I had both meetings this past month. For the Sustainable Commission, we're taking a look at a community garden. Of course, to look at that, we actually divided the commission members into specific areas such as compost, looking at how they would structure the community garden and what else we need to look at. So, those updates will be forthcoming and very exciting as well. During our sanitation and recycling, we actually did a field trip to the Frederick County, what's the, landfill, thank you very much. And actually, the recycling center was our highlight, and we had a tour done, which was actually very interesting to see how they process recycling and how they process our trash. Whether you live in Carroll or Frederick, all of our trash goes to Frederick County, which was very interesting. And believe it or not, all of our trash just gets shipped up to Pennsylvania. They don't even use their landfill, and they just dump it on the ground, push it into a big 18-wheeler, and drive it up to Pennsylvania. And that's about how long it takes for your trash to go up there. So, that was actually very interesting to see. But also, it kind of hit home that with all of these front loaders just pushing trash or recycling, it's really up to the residents whether they recycle or not. There's no one standing there making sure, oh, this is recycling, let's put it here, and this is trash, let's put it there. If it goes in your trash, it's going into a landfill somewhere else. And if you decide to recycle, then they recycle it. But it really hits home that you guys are the first kind of line of defense, whether you recycle or not. So, we're going to be doing some education in schools here in town and around the surrounding area to make sure that we hit home about recycling. And compost is getting a little bit bigger news. Some of the newspapers are starting to pick up composting in Frederick County, and the commission will start taking a look at actually purchasing some personal compost bins for residents, and we will hold education sessions about how to compost. We have a gentleman on our commission that has so deemed himself an expert, and I know nothing about composting, so I will believe him in every way possible. And it's hard. It's very, very hard to do to make sure that you do it right. And we're going to hold courses and education classes for residents around Mount Area so that they are able to compost effectively. So, all of that will get done. The commission is taking another look at the one-arm trash truck again, and we're going to be voting on this in September to see whether we do a test neighborhood or not. The hauler came back with some numbers that are quite interesting. We're going to reach out to actually Lake Ligonore, who their entire community, their trash is picked up by this one-arm trash truck. And they've said that it turned out pretty well, so we're going to take a look at if it's beneficial for our town. And that concludes my report. My next meeting is Sustainable Mount Area, which is on August 21st, 1st at 7:00 PM.
All right, thank you. Streets and Rivers Commission, Councilwoman Washington.
Yes, OPD. Our commission met on July 9th, and we reviewed all the old business regarding speed control issues that had come to our attention. One of the things that was noted after reviewing a lot of these issues is that when we do traffic studies, if it's over 10 miles per hour that it seems the majority of people are going, then there's an issue with the road. If it falls under that, then that really is an enforcement. So, the majority of the traffic studies, we had a list about this that Lynn Collady was very, very kind. She went through all of them. She sat with Chief Douglas and reviewed all those traffic studies with him, and now he has all the traffic studies that were dealt. So, it was a really good starting point to continue the traffic studies. And we also learned that the first line of defense is to go to the chief, and then the chief will contact the Department of Public Works, correct me if I'm wrong there. They will continue to do the, the police force is not going to be doing the traffic studies, but he will be the person to instruct the Department of Public Works to do it. We also talked about, and I want to talk to you about this, Leafy Hollow. They have been requesting traffic studies done, and we have talked...
I think there's been several done there already.
Have they already done it? Just in the past weeks?
Well, previously, nothing recently, I don't think. I think they... There's only these two traffic studies in the last six months.
Okay, so, we'll talk about that because we were thinking we wanted to do another one in the school session, but we were thinking of doing this this summer as well. And Brian said he didn't have any problem doing that. All right, so, I'll talk to you offline about that. The next thing is, we do need to talk about the cross, the possible crosswalk at the Lotsleys Kings Forest that would be over Nottingham. I know that there's, I have to actually get more information on this because that's where the bus stops, and there's not a stop sign there. Are you aware of that?
Yeah, that was what I, is that what I forwarded to you, that the resident had a concern about? I was, I was just forwarding that on behalf because she had indicated to me about a stop sign. I was not aware about a crosswalk. So, whatever the commission seems to deem fit, then it's okay.
Let's make a point, whatever the commission recommends, we'll listen back. And if you're not going to refer to a stop sign, you can side walk.
So, I will actually send you an email, Barney, about this because when I reviewed everything that we had discussed, what had been told to me was to contact you, to contact the Carroll County Transportation Coordinator and see what they recommended, if they have purview over that, whether or not that's true.
Is that a school bus?
Are you talking about the, you're probably talking about the, I guess, the school bus coordinator?
He lives there, you're in law.
Yeah.
Mr. Short, right there.
Yeah. I think we need to come to a meeting of minds because there's a stop sign down the street, and so, do we really want to put another stop sign there? I mean, Sheriff, there's a crosswalk there. I could go over there and walk around. It would probably be beneficial for us to do that, and before school starts.
Sure.
And I'm leaving August 16th, so make it short. Very short.
I'll be when you're ready.
Yeah, okay, so, I'll be calling you.
Okay.
All right. One of the problems we've been having is the extension of South Main Street. And one of the residents, her name is Lisa Lawson, and she's extremely, extremely involved in this issue, and so I would like to thank her for that. There's very big events that occur at Ligonore, Winery. The last event was the riding festival. And so, what we did was, we put additional display sign right at the entrance of the extension of South Main Street. And on Saturday, it worked somewhat, but not 100%. So, the mayor, Pat Rockenberg, was right on it the next day. He got up there, and he moved the cones a little bit to the left, and that seemed to help.
And I sweep the street curbs.
So, the residents were clear of how...
And Patty, I think, Barney, you are getting us surprised on dropping the island, and you're right for a street curbs, or do you ever come in?
Yes. Yeah, so, we did make a drawing. I don't think I sent that to you yet. But basically, to try to square up that, as the street comes up to, you know, the curve, they would kind of square up with it rather than just have it like wide open to have like a, you know, curved island there, and then probably make it easy, just help make it easier to define that road.
It really, it looks like a straight away. And we, it's very easy to have to repaint now, and then look at that island.
Right. So, it would be, would it be a rotary? I mean, what I want to see, I can tell you, is this island, is the island the same as a rotary?
So, basically, if you think of that right curve, it would like start to curve around, like you're headed towards McDonald's, kind of gear the traffic that direction and let them know that it's actually a right-hand turn to go straight rather than just, you know, people going.
I was just envisioning some kind of barrier there, because even that street sign did not. We thought for sure that it was some kind of a physical barrier.
Okay, yeah. Okay, so, we definitely got to do that because it is a problem. And I believe that it's, and our next meeting is Tuesday, September 3rd, the day after Ligonore.
All right. Water and Sewer Commission, Special Projects, that would be me. And let's see, there was not a July meeting because the fireworks display was going on during that day. And since then, we have met with the Maridale residents to talk about landscaping at that Maridale Stormwater Management Bond. And the next meeting is, it's Wednesday, August 7th, at 7:00 PM. Mr. Swanson, have you got anything to add to that, or is that about it? Okay, I will see you on Wednesday. That completes my report. Town Administrator, not here. Town Attorney, report.
Very briefly worked on most of the ordinances that were on the agenda tonight. Attended the Planning Commission meeting, and also, most recently, worked on the CSX Trail acquisition. And just will talk about that and other things in close session.
Okay. Code Enforcement, report. I think we all have a copy of that. And with that, what I'll do is move that we go into close session. Following the close session, the meeting will be adjourned. And the close session is for possible acquisition of real property next to a train station on South Main and Rails to Trails and the CSX property. We'll call on that. Pam, let's say aye.
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
I'm an aye. Patty?
Aye.
Okay. With that, we move into close session. Thank you.